If you will and are able, please stand for the invocation. I'd like to introduce the Pastor Warren Green from the Glen Haven Baptist Church will have the invocation. And if you would, remain standing for the place of the flag.
Thank you, sir. Lord God, we come to you tonight, and we're very grateful for the opportunity to be here, had this Board of Commissioners meeting. Our Father, we just ask that you would have your hand on every piece of business that is presented tonight. We pray for our Commissioners, we pray for Chairman Smith, Lord, that you would just give them wisdom as they make decisions that impact this county. Lord, we pray for each and every resident of our county. Lord, we thank you for the growth that you're bringing us as a county, and ask that you just continue to help us to deal with that growth in the way that we should. Lord, we pray that every decision that is made tonight would not be about our personal agendas, Lord, but would be about what's best for our county and what you want. Father, we love you. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together as a group, and just ask that your blessing be on everything that's said and done here. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm showing 6:30 with the regular Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM meeting, July the 12th, 2015, come to order. Having an announcement, the following item was advertised but has been postponed at the request of District 3 Commission and will not be heard at this time. This item will be heard August the 18th, 2015, at 6:30 PM, and the property will be posted. Public hearing, RZ-14-01, Meredith Homes of McDonough, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture to R3 Single Family Residential for property located at 354 Wilson Road in Land Lot 114 and 143 of the 7th District. The property consists of 11.683 plus or minus acres, and the request is for a single-family residential subdivision, and it's in District 3. So if you're here for this, there will not be a public hearing on this, so if you're here for that purpose only, you can hang around, but we won't hear that. Having said that, does somebody move on the board to accept the agenda as published?
Remove it.
Have a motion for District 3?
Second.
Second, District 1, any further discussion, on the favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Public comments, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment. Speaker former, you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Taking them in order, first with Mr. Dan Edwards. If you would, come to the podium and state your name, please, and you're going to talk about bookbag giveaway.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Dan Edwards, and I bring you greetings on behalf of Greater New Hope Christian Assembly, where Dan Edwards Jr. is the pastor. We're not the same person. I'm his son. In my opinion, I think I'm a little better-looking. But moving forward, Chairman, it seems like just yesterday that I was up here announcing our third annual bookbag giveaway, but today I'm here announcing our fourth annual bookbag giveaway. This is something we started back in 2011, and we felt it was our obligation as a church, we're a church that cares more about the well-being and welfare of the community, rather than what we're putting in the collection, or how much we're putting in the collection plate on Sundays. And we realized that probably next to Christmas, this is probably one of the most stressful times for parents when it comes to school shopping, whether it be clothing or school supplies. And Greater New Hope, we're here to fill that void. Since 2011, we've given away over 2,500 bookbags filled with school supplies, haircuts, we've done blood drive, and we've also given away school clothes as well. We partner with an organization called Caring for Others, and that enables us to give out school clothes as well. But something we did a little bit different this year, we changed the location. And this year, it'll be on Saturday, August 1st, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Austin Road Middle School. That's 100 Austin Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. So it's across from the Fairview Rec Center along with the library. And we wanted to reach out more and extend that arm to the community and work with other entities this year. There'll be free bookbags and school supplies while they last. Our plan is to give away 1,000 bookbags this year, stuffed with school supplies for children. And, you know, this wouldn't be possible, this isn't possible because of just one individual. This is a number of organizations, and this is truly a great, great event. This is true greatness in the making, and this is what happens when a community comes together, truly what happens when a community comes together with one common goal. And there are a few individuals that I would like to thank personally for making this happen. First and foremost, Mr. Wiley, who's the principal at Austin Road Middle School. I called him this year, and before I could even get the presentation out of my mouth good, he was saying yes. And he wasn't worried about who received the credit or anything of that nature. His responsibility was, how can I help? How could Austin Road help? So I really want to thank Mr. Wiley and the Henry County School System on accepting this. Legacy Ford here in McDonough, they've been excellent, they've provided a donation this year. Pratt Recycle, Pratt Industries, as well as Chief Nichols of the Henry County Police Department. He's been excellent as well. Same thing, before I could finish, you know, he had offered any resources that he could provide. Same goes for Sheriff McBrayer, as always, he's been a partner in this event since its inception. We'll have an individual from Homeland Security there, so safety and security won't be an issue, and if things get out of hand, I don't mind reverting back to my military training as well, but I hope I won't have to use that. I don't think so. Senator Emmanuel Jones, and as well as Congressman Davis Scott, they've committed to the event as well. Children must be present to be at the event. Children must be present with their parent in order to receive a bookbag at the event. I also want to thank the Greater New Hope Christian Assembly Academy as well, and Radio 1, they've done a great deal in helping to get the word out about the event. And we actually just had our celebrity guest confirm for the event. I won't make that announcement at this time, but I will say you've seen this individual on TV and heard them on the radio quite often. But if any individual has any questions, they can email gnhca@bookbag2015@gmail.com. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield my time.
Thank you. Next we'll have Mr. Louis Galiter.
My D I N three boys call me Gorilla. I got commissioned, I said it's Lieutenant. Lieutenant, it's Golier, G-O-L-E-R. Second G is silent.
Okay.
I want to thank the Chairman and the Commissioners for giving me an opportunity to express my concerns, my wife and I's concerns regarding the traffic on Rock Quarry Road. I prepared a couple of pages here to try to focus in on, you know, what we've talked about. My wife and I live in the city limits of Stockbridge on Rock Quarry Road. We've been there for 16 years at the Gardens of Eagles Landing, that's all the stucco homes with terracotta roofs. And our backyard faces Rock Quarry Road. The exterior wall of our master bedroom is approximately 96.4 feet from the center line of Rock Quarry Road, and the back wall of our property is about 50 feet to the edge of it, or the start of it. Now, there's a slope on Rock Quarry Road that starts to drop approximately 35 degrees as you reach the entrance of Ashley Apartments, and it continues down in front of the backyard of our home, and then gradually starts to rise 35 degrees going north towards Banks Road. We definitely hear the acceleration and the deceleration of our cars, and especially trucks in both directions. Now, the speed limit on Rock Quarry Road, as you get off Eagles Landing Parkway, is 45 miles an hour, as you navigate through what I call a business district, which is populated with many businesses, apartment buildings, residences, and other medical offices that feed off Piedmont Henry. The 45 mile-per-hour speed limit is posted all the way down on Rock Quarry Road to another sign posted just before you get to the bridge over the railroad tracks, in a much less populated area in comparison to the Piedmont Hospital area. Now, a lot of times, the 45 mile-per-hour speed limit becomes 55 to 60 miles per hour. Now, this makes getting into and out of our subdivision very dangerous at times, and most recently, it was a big problem with the recent construction of Banks Road in preparation for the installation of a stoplight. The standing traffic backed up beyond the entrance of Ashley Woods Apartments, and at the time, the air level readings of standing traffic showed readings of 54 to 57 out of 100 air rating quality. There was lots of standing diesel trucks and fumes, you know, coming over our back wall. The biggest change is the increase in truck traffic primarily on Rock Quarry Road with 52-foot tractor trailers pulling loads up and down the road. Whether they have a load or just are empty, they do generate a lot of noise. I've used a sound level meter, and it documented sound levels up to an over 70 decibels, and that's the measurement, and that's how you define noise on the road. Now, a lot of times, the highest speeds of gravel and tractor trailer trucks means higher noise levels. So when you couple this with the Rock Quarry Road trucks rolling up and down the road all night towards 175, it gets very loud at night, especially from 10 to 7 o'clock in the morning. Rock Quarry Road becomes a trucker's road, and I guess some people count sheep at night, I count trucks. About four years ago, Mr. McMichael came to our house to listen to my comments, and at my suggestion placed a "No Hand Brake" sign just before the trucks start to descend down Rock Quarry Road in front of our house. The sign has been about 90% effective, it's been fantastic. And my wife and I personally want to thank Mr. McMichael, and also obviously approval by the county for putting that "Hands Brake" sign up. It's amazing what something like that can do. Let me just analyze a few things. In my opinion, the traffic studies that were done on Rock Quarry Road three and four years ago are no longer valid and are outdated. The construction of a bridge over the railroad tracks has added another dimension that I do not believe the DOT anticipated. The volume of tractor trailer trucks traveling up and down Rock Quarry Road has more than doubled since the bridge was built. A recent inquiry that I made with the state DOT, and the question that I asked, when you do traffic studies for widening, expanding roads, do you include noise and air pollution metrics? The answer that I received via email was no, unless it is programmed for, we do not do air and noise pollution studies. Let me just summarize with an executive summary with some recommendations. Reduce the speed from 45 to 25 miles an hour as you turn on Rock Quarry Road from Eagles Landing Parkway through the heavily populated business district. Once the entrance to Wind Song Subdivision is reached, raise the speed limit to 35 miles an hour, all the way down to the other 35 mile-per-hour sign just before you reach the bridge, and the noise levels will drop accordingly. Second, install a stoplight at Piedmont Hospital entrance, giving all travelers who enter and leave the hospital, another medical building surrounding the area, a safer way to leave without incident.
Time's up.
Okay.
Thank you. Next we'll have Mr. Carl Swenson.
Good evening, gentlemen. Carl Swenson, 43, Thurman Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, the unincorporated part. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed increase in taxes, and to ask why the county Commissioners have decided that there's going to be a varying rate of taxation, and that is kind of like unconstitutional, because you're supposed to apply one tax across the board, but it seems like you want to cut it up for different areas, make it more for some, less for others. I've never heard of that before, but I guess you guys are being advised by the county attorneys that it's okay. I want to ask, I'm not going to ask, I'm going to tell you that the actions of the county commission in regards to the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation are still in deep, deep question, because we have one situation where the chief financial officer is not on the Board of Commissioners. The Articles of Incorporation for that corporation clearly state that only the members of the Board of Commissioners, plus your secretary, plus your secretary, are to be members of the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation. So, the fact that Fred Alletta is now a chief financial officer is in direct conflict with your Articles of Incorporation. I don't know how many other conflicts there are, because it seems like every time I look, I find more. But the bottom line is, you guys are still sitting there as corporate execs. You're not occupying the seats that you were elected to occupy, and I would suggest strongly that you come clean with the public and let them know what is going on, because they do not have a clue as to what this is all about. What they don't know also is the structure. They don't know the structure of the state. Let me give you a little clue. There's 12 men sitting up there at the Gold Dome, and those 12 men are in the Legislative Council. They're the ones that write "all," not "some," "all," Georgia law. Those same 12 are responsible for advising the people that you deal with, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. They advise your county attorney, the city attorneys, and everybody else on how to write legislation. Seems okay, I guess, but, you know, we elected people to represent us. We didn't elect people to delegate the authority to the attorneys who now control the entire state. So at what point do you stand up as men and say, enough is enough? At what point do you say, "I want to do my constitutional duty and eliminate this influence within our county"? You are men, and you can stand up, regardless of what you've been told that your orientation for new Commissioners or for new politicians, regardless of what the orientation teaches you as men, as constitutional oath-taking men. It's your duty to represent the people and to be their servants, not their masters. We are the ones that pay the salaries. You are the ones that receive the salaries. As such, a lot more respect should be shown to the people that you are now wanting to raise taxes on. There is no reason for the budget of this county to be expanded any more than it already is. Yes, we're growing, but you know what? So is the tax base with the new building that's going up. So however you justify these new increases, one thing we can always count on from the commission, whether it's you or the next group that gets in here, is that you are going to continue to update and upgrade the tax base and increase our taxes to the point where the older people that are on Social Security will no longer be able to live here, and the county will do like all other counties do. When they fail to grow, they die. If that's where you want this county to go, that's the direction you faced us in. But you still have your oath, you still have bonds, which by the way, are invalid, I don't care what your attorneys have told you, because when I see the check written to the ACCG, I go to the Securities and Exchange Commission, and guess what? They're not insurance carriers, and only insurance carriers can carry your bond. So all of you are personally responsible for anything you do up there and can be sued accordingly. They're advising you wrong, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next we'll recognize Mr. Elton Alexander for five minutes.
Good evening, gentlemen. Elton Alexander, 920 Maple Leaf Drive, McDonough. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I wanted to come and speak to you about our internet service in the county. I know you have Mr. Richard Scott that's going to speak to you earlier, but I wanted to expound the pun and to just kind of set the table for him, to let you know that we get these complaints and we get this issue before, because we care Henry County more, almost more than anything. It's kind of like Feast of famine, the areas that have Feast, that have Charter and Comcast built in, those networks do quite well. I made the mistake of assuming that because I had a Charter broadband connection that most of the citizens of Henry County did years ago, but from listening to the complaints that we've been getting of 3 megabyte speed and just very slow speed. It is shocking to me that, I'm from a little small town in Georgia, population's probably about 500. In 1980, we had cable TV, we had cable build-out into the entire city, and the population was 500. A county this size with this many people in it, over 200,000, it shocks me sometimes when I realize that the build-out or the lack thereof from Charter, Comcast, AT&amp;T, those things were seen to come second-hand. It puts us at a competitive disadvantage in the competition. Right now is really a key time for metro Atlanta, and for us to be the players of the caliber that we need to be, we need some investment on our end, and we need some lobbying on our end from our elected officials to move the table forward. But I'll let Mr. Scott go forth with that and laying out the details with it. I would also like to talk about several other issues going on in the community. We had made some strides last year with the budget and having additional funding available because we did not accept a full rollback. I would also ask you, gentlemen, to embrace that same philosophy, giving the voters back some of the money that is due, but not to overdo it, because we want to have, to strike a balance. Striking that balance means that we don't want to go back to the service levels that we were at previously. We started to make some improvement, and I kind of like to see that, but I don't want to see us cut back too much. I still have not seen the level of service that I would like to see in the right-of-way maintenance, which is something that is a constant issue, is that, you know, we take pride in our community, but, you know, sometimes I see the grass get very high. I had spoken with Mr. McMichaeli on numerous occasions, I've spoken with the Assistant or the interim county manager about steps that were being put in place. Just know that that is a challenge, and when, you know, we approve the budget, the village is really paying for the budget. So whatever little bit that we can set aside for programs like right-of-way maintenance would be very much appreciated by citizens like myself. Thank you so much.
Next we'll recognize Mr. Bill Tony to discuss ethics concerns. You have 15 minutes, come to the podium, state your name, please.
There's a little bit of unfinished business from last meeting. Mr. Barham, when we were talking about these letters of resignation, he said he took, he got advice from the county attorney. I didn't think that was right, so I called the ex-county attorney and asked her if she This was the response that I got back. If you don't mind, Mr. Barham. Pardon me? I'd like to ask you to read it, if you would, sir.
Bill, I don't have any intentions of reading it. If you want to read it, you're welcome to read it.
Chairman Smith, would you mind reading it?
I'm not going to read it as well. I would think it'd be best coming from you.
Mr. Jogstetter, would you read it?
No, sir.
Okay. So it looks like it's going to be me.
I think it'd be best if you read it.
It says, "This is a letter to Mr. Jogstetter from Latonya Wiley. Dear Patrick, Local citizen Bill Tony recently advised me that he appeared before the Board of Commissioners during a regular scheduled meeting on July the 7th, 2015. During this meeting, Mr. Tony expressed concern about the appropriateness of certain Commissioners processing undated resignations of their appointees to local boards and authorities. According to Mr. Tony, District 3 Commissioner Gary Barham responded by stating that when he first took office, the county attorney suggested that we do these resignation letters. I subsequently viewed that portion of the meeting, which confirms Mr. Tony's account of this matter. Mr. Barham's public statement that I suggested that he obtain updated resignations of the board to his appointees is patently false." He didn't tell the truth on that one, according to her. "I have never recommended, suggested, or advised any Commissioner, advised Commissioner Barham, or any other Commissioner to take such an action. To be clear, Commissioner Barham made this decision on his own, after he learned that previous Commissioner had done this in the past. Commissioner Barham's decision to follow suit was made without any recommendation or prompting from me. I certainly did not suggest that these resignation letters to him or any other past or present Commissioner. As you know, board appointees are purely political decisions. It is quite common for public officials to respond to citizens requiring about the wisdom of the political decisions. It is unfortunate that Mr. Commissioner Barham has declined to take ownership of a purely political decision that he may be based on considerations of which only he was aware. I would ask, I ask that you advise Commissioner Barham to refrain from making any additional false statements about me regarding this matter." That was to the county. That was to the county attorney. All right, let me say that, let me put this back down. Your appointee Jimmy Carter, I know Jimmy Carter. I think he's a fine man. I think he's a hardworking man. I think he's a good Christian guy. I think the world of him. I would consider him, if I was in your position, an appointee. He's a good man. To me, I would have never asked for resignation. It's a two-year term and if anybody, if you have any faith at all in him, you wouldn't ask for resignation. Mr. Jeffries? Same thing. All right, I looked at the Water Authority again. Getting back to conflicts of interest, Rick Jeffries' brother works there. He's the sixth highest paid guy at the Water Authority. Lindy Farmer, number one, at $256,506.91. I have yet to find another person in the county that makes that kind of money. And if you know about it, I'd like for you to please call me and tell me. I don't hardly know anybody that makes near, a little over half of that kind of money. All right, I've gone and did a little research on the salaries and in 2008, well, to be honest with you, it seemed like they always, when the county was struggling and you asked all the employees to go five years without a raise, I think the Water Authority, they just kept on getting theirs. From what I can tell, Lindy Farmer, as long as forever, he's gotten 5% every year. In 2008, they did a little change over there. Now what this says is in 2008, they redid the way that they gave out raises. Now, a citizen doesn't have the right to ask for anything else. I could get no records after 2008. That looks like a lot of secrecy and it just makes you question everything else. And it really does. Once you start reading this stuff, it really gets crazy. As far as, getting back to Mr. Jeffries and the conflict of interest. This right here is out of the county code of ethics. I don't know if Mr. Jogstetter's ever read it, but he needs to read it if he hadn't. And all you, I've given y'all a copy and evidently y'all didn't read it either. But it plainly says that an appearance of a conflict of interest by anybody is against the county ethics. The appearance. Now, I'm not saying that Rick Jeffries, because he's a senator, it's a conflict of interest settled in the Water Authority, but everything else around it, it does have appearance to be a conflict of interest. When you're dealing with the budgets that these guys are dealing with, over $60 million, you have to be careful. Now, as far as the meetings go over there, they decided they didn't need to meet for one time a month. According to this, they're supposed to meet two times a month. And I'm sure that even though, they might meet for an hour, 30 minutes or whatever, they're getting paid to meet for two times a month. I'd like to ask one more time. That's Rick Jeffries' letter of resignation. Mr. Preston, please date it and accept it.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'd like to hear from Mr. Richard Scott to discuss the lack of broadband internet service. Come up and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Richard Scott and I come before you as a resident of Henry County to discuss how the lack of broadband internet access is affecting my household, my community. What is broadband internet access? The FCC defines broadband internet access of speeds of 25 megabits per second. And megabits are simply tiny units of data that are used to access the internet. And in our county, we have internet access from AT&amp;T, Charter Communications, and Comcast. AT&amp;T states through their U-verse internet service, they offer internet speeds in our county of up to 45 megabits per second in Henry County. They charge $40 per month for that speed and when bundled with their phone service, it comes out to about $55 per month. Charter states through their Spectrum internet service, they offer speeds up to 60 megabytes per second and they charge about $55 per month for that speed. Comcast markets their Xfinity internet service as being able to access speeds up to 2,000 megabits per second in Henry County, which are considered multi-gig speeds. 2,000 megabits per second may be out of reach for most residents because it's at a cost of $299 per month, but Comcast does offer 75 megabytes per second at the rate of $40 per month. Where I live in Henry County, I am limited to AT&amp;T's DSL service at a speed of 3 megabytes per second. They charge me $33 per month and have the nerve to put a cap on how much data I use. After 200 gigabytes of usage, they charge me additional fees and they get away with this because they don't have any competition in my area. Recently, this is July 8th, I did a speed test on my internet service using the website Speedtest.net and it stated that our internet service is the slowest in the United States with 92% of the country having faster internet service than we do. The grade we received was an F. How can anyone in my household or my community be productive with 2 megabytes per second download speeds and .28 megabytes per second of upload speeds? Why does broadband internet service or broadband internet access matter? As the parent of school-aged children, access to broadband internet is critical. Both of my boys are in a gifted program at their school, which is Pace Creek Elementary. One of the goals of this program calls for advanced research. This past school year, at least 35 to 45% of my son's homework, both of them, required them to do some research online or access a video of some sort online. And guess what? Each and every time, I had to take them to my parents' house, who live in Conyers, just to have access to broadband internet. My oldest son cannot keep up with one of his best friends who won the First in Math Challenge for his entire school because the website First in Math does not function well with our internet service. And my son is capable. As a matter of fact, he is very capable if he had access to broadband internet service. As a business owner, I am at a competitive disadvantage. I produce videos for numerous occasions, weddings, engagement videos, small business commercials, retirement parties, et cetera. I cannot compete with 3 megabytes per second because videos that are two minutes in length take 45 minutes to an hour to upload. Videos that are 10 minutes in length take all night to upload. And anything longer than 15 minutes, like a wedding or some type of special occasion, it's impossible to upload from my home. I can't even update the software on my new desktop computer without going to my parents' house in Conyers. My wife is scheduled to take her board exam at the end of this year. The videos that she has purchased from Emory University that are streamed from their medical education site can't be accessed properly. She has to leave our home and go somewhere that has internet, that has broadband internet access. She's at a disadvantage. And being able to enjoy leisure services like Netflix or on-demand TV programming or even playing a video game with the latest video game console is a far-fetched fantasy. My suggestion or my suggested solution, let's build our own gigabit internet infrastructure. Gigabit internet is defined as internet access with download speeds at a minimum of 1,000 megabytes per second. And I say let's invest in the infrastructure for our entire county. The benefits, one of the reasons why the county should invest in gigabit internet access is simple, economic development. If you want to attract businesses and the very best in the talent pool, research shows that gigabit networks are a major factor in influencing businesses and talent to come to the area. Another major factor, property values rise. Who doesn't want their property value to rise? Another benefit, the education gap closes. Our children are able to compete with students who are accessing the internet for learning opportunity. And everyone in our county, Henry County, will be able to use the internet for leisure entertainment or to run a home business or to take online courses at a college or university. The Executive Office of the President released a report in January of 2015 titled, "Community-Based Broadband Solutions: Benefits of Competition and Choice for Community Development and High-Speed Internet Access." In that report, it stated that economic studies confirm that broadband internet creates significant value for consumers and makes an important and rapidly going contribution to local municipalities and to the GDP. In an article written on motherboard.vice.com, the author stated that communities with gigabit internet access will experience increased property values over communities that don't have gigabit internet access. The article stated that when families go to buy a new home, they most often look for good schools, safe neighborhoods, maybe something near public transportation, but increasingly and undeniably, access to internet to gigabit internet service. Cities and towns across the country are beginning to see next-generation internet access as a necessity citing its impact on property values, rent values, and overall economic A CNN report stated that there are educational benefits to communities that have gigabit internet access. Students with broadband internet at home have a 7% higher graduation rate, according to the Federal Communications Commission. Students with broadband internet service are able to access Web 2.02s and Web 3.02s to collaborate on science projects or even video chat with teachers from around the Resources to build gigabit internet access are Next Century Cities, Broadband USA, and the US Department of Agriculture. Next Century Cities is a public interest initiative that supports cities and leaders as they seek to ensure all have access to affordable, reliable, fast internet, and it is free to join. Broadband USA is the president's latest initiative to support community broadband projects and to promote broadband deployment and adoption. Broadband USA offers online and in-person technical assistance to communities. They host regional workshops around the country and publish guidelines and tools that provide communities with proven solutions to address problems in broadband infrastructure planning, financing, construction, and operations across many business types. As I close, I would like to say if there is anyone that would like to discuss how gigabit internet, how 8 gigabit internet infrastructure would benefit our county, I can be reached by email at richardscott@mac.com. My personal cell phone number is 678-525-2770. I have started a Facebook group titled, "The Henry County Gigabit Movement." I am on Twitter at @IAMRICHARD and Instagram at @RICHARDSCOTT. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I sincerely thank you for your time and consideration and I look forward to working with you to bring gigabit internet service to Henry County. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Addressing this issue, it's about a year or two ago, and it kind of got lost. I don't know what happened, but there was a bid out and we kind of dropped it and kind of dropped the ball on the entire process. So what I was hoping, that Skip can come up and tell us where we are today and what could we do to move this forward. I think this is a very important initiative for this county. You know, everybody knows that we're not competing just in Henry County, we're competing against the world, basically. So I think it's very important that we start looking at trying to move forward on initiatives as important as this.
I agree. Gentlemen, thanks for listening to me. I agree with this gentleman 100%. Broadband is definitely something we have got to work on. The absolute fact of the matter is, is cost. We're looking 50, 60, $70,000 a mile, a mile to pull fiber. That's, you know, you get a strand of fiber, you have 12 strands, 24 strands, 48 strands. The higher the strands come in, the higher the price is going to be. So you're going to end up 50, $60,000 a mile. Now, we're looking, trying to pull fiber into our building right now from one point of presence. That one pull is going to be close to a half a million dollars, just for that one pull. If we started today and fibered the entire county, we're looking probably $15 million to build a fiber ring out and that's not, that's not going to touch the public. They won't even get close to the public yet. We're looking five, 10 years down the road, maybe. That fiber ring would connect our buildings, the schools maybe, mostly government entities, some of the fire stations, even those, some of them would not be touched because they're so far out. You can't pull $300,000 with the fiber to save $50 a month on a connection. It's just not going to do it. And Charter, we have a neighborhood right behind us. There's three empty lots. One of our techs wanted to get U-verse in there. AT&amp;T wouldn't pull it past three houses until those three houses were built. Private company, he's not going to spend $10,000 to make $50 a month. Other than that, guys, we are definitely trying to get fiber pulled into this county to better the county business and the schools, but how long it will take to get to the public, that's a huge question and it's a lot of money, so. But, any questions, guys?
District 2?
Skip, I've had some conversations with, and Commissioner Holmes is exactly right. I mean, we had looked at this issue a few years ago, but, and I think it was good that those discussions at least led to, I know we, I know, and I'm sure Bruce did too, but afterwards, I got calls from several of our providers here in the county. They don't like to publicize their maps of where they have fiber in the county, but they just said, "If you ever have any issues or concerns of where you're not getting service, whether it's business or so forth, keep us posted." And that's why I always just go tell Mr. Scott that, I appreciate him sharing all his contact information. I've already drafted up the email to one of my liaisons that I know we've dealt with at the county at AT&amp;T and let's see if we can at least find out if there's a build-out schedule. Because I know, I've seen it in several of my neighborhoods within my district that there's been huge infrastructure investments here in the last year, so I don't want us to, believe me, I understand how hard it is when you don't have the infrastructure. I mean, internet- I mean, internet is just as powerful as water and electricity these days. I mean, when you talk about your business and your children, I completely get it. I mean, Khan Academy and all those other things that are incredible resources for our kids, if you don't have that, but I, before I run AT&amp;T or our other providers under the bus and come back, because as you even said, it's a lot of investment, a lot of cost, I'd like to give them a chance with Mr. Scott to defend themselves. So that's why I've got an email that you'll be receiving shortly, so we're going to see if we can put you in contact with our liaison over at AT&amp;T and see where things go.
And I would, I would be glad to go out with them and whatever I can do, because we may have dark fiber in the air already that we could lease out to Charter or AT&amp;T. There's a lot of time that we could sit down and figure this thing out. But the biggest problem is absolutely cost. It's going to be cost and time. I feel this pain. I have fifteen meg DSL or U-verse at my house. I'm the IT director. I feel the same pain. I know what he's dealing with.
Right.
And I can't imagine at three meg, I just, I don't know what I would do. But I feel the pain and understand it, but it's all, it all boils down to money and, and infrastructure and time. If we started tomorrow, it would be two or three years to pull a ring around this county. You got to touch every pole. You got to get rightaways. You got to get over the interstate. You got to get over the railroad tracks. There's a lot of infrastructure and items you have to get around to get this done.
Who was land fiber in Hayfield and Decatur, close to the county line, Henry County line? Have we reached out to them to see if we can be a part of that?
We have, and probably every other county in the country has talked to them. What they're looking for is a very large footprint of customers, basically. The problem with Henry County is we're a very large landmass spread out, very large, so it costs a lot more to get to fewer people. And, you know, spending, if I go up in that area and I get ten thousand customers a mile, or I come down here and get two hundred customers a mile, and I don't know the numbers, that's just a wag, but I, I don't, I don't think they would invest the money anytime soon until the population density grew further. Now, they may come into the middle of McDonough eventually because you have a lot more density here and do something like that, but I don't see it in the near future. I'll probably be retired by then, but. Any other questions, guys?
Thank you so much.
Sir, let me know. I'd be glad to help.
Consent agenda, the following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. And before we vote on this, I will allow the commissioner to add or delete the items. Public Safety, Resolution approving license for space agreement and approval of the National Light Out 215 campaign. Senior Services, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an amendment to the community block grant contract for fiscal year 2015. Resolution authorizing senior services to submit a revision to the project application plan to DHS and accept amendment number two to the community service block grant contract for fiscal year 2015. Resolution authorizing the execution of the aging sub-grant contract with the Atlanta Region Commission for fiscal year 2016. E-911 Communications, resolutions approving renewal of the Web EOC Software Support Agreement with Intermedals for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Resolution approving renewal of the Reply System Incorporated Service Agreement for the 9/11 Center for FY 2015, 2016. Resolution approving renewal of the Harris Software FX Agreement for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Resolution approving renewal of the Harris Radio System Maintenance Agreement for fiscal year 2015, 2016. I might add, on that particular resolution, if you would, pending any change, we're going to change that 529,536 that's indicated there. We're going to reduce it down to 424,608. Public Works, resolution requesting authorization to apply for the fiscal year 2016 Georgia Department of Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant. This right here ends the consent agenda. Does any commissioner like to add or delete any items I just read? Yes, sir.
I had the pleasure of talking to Mr. Don Ashday, because we recorded a public, you know, one of the, the profile shows we do with Melissa, and it was really good, but Don let it be known, and I felt like the consent agenda didn't do it justice. The reason that got dialed down about a hundred thousand dollars on the radios is because he found old equipment or equipment we already had that he could repurpose for chargers and other things, and I just, I want to commend Don for coming up with creative ways to save the county money, and I love consent agenda, but I also want to make sure we give praise to employees as they find ways to save money, because that's good for the taxpayers and good for all of us.
Any other comments? If not, does somebody move we approve the resolutions and the consent agendas as I just previously read? Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second, District One, any further discussions? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Senior Services, a resolution authorizing the purchase of kitchen equipment for the senior services department. Ms. Reed, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. As you stated, I am here seeking authorization for the purchase of equipment for the kitchens for senior services cafeterias.
We have the resolution in the book, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six oh two thirty-one for Tri-Mart Strategic Equipment. We have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners authorizing the purchase of equipment, kitchen equipment. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion, District Five? Oh, you have a question?
I was going to ask what scenario it was.
We have the Heritage and Hidden Valley kitchens. Heritage in McDonough will be getting a, what's called a double-stack steamer. The kitchen at Hidden Valley will get a single-stack steamer and a larger-capacity fryer. You're welcome.
We got the discussion a little bit out of sequence, so we do have a motion from District Five. Have a second from District Three, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Next, we have, does this constitute a public hearing on this issue, counsel?
Well, it's a hearing. It's not, it's not a public hearing that you have to open up to the public.
I don't have to open it up to the public, right?
But it would be a hearing, you would, if there's anybody from A&amp;S Commissary Services, you will have to hear from them.
I understand that. Okay. Next, we have a resolution requesting approval or denial of an occupational tax refund for Trinity Services Group Incorporated, aka also A&amp;S Commissary LLC located sixteen Andrews, Suite 300. Pam, how you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. Just like to read this resolution. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve or deny refund to Trinity Services Group Incorporated Doing Business as A&amp;S Commissary Services LLC for a refund of the 2014 occupational tax paid, whereas on August 23rd, 2013, a certificate of occupancy was issued for A&amp;S Commissary Services LLC by the Henry County Fire Department, whereas on October the 16th, 2013, a payment of eighteen hundred, sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents was received from a twenty, for a 2013 occupational tax certificate based on a reported fourteen million, six hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents in gross receipts with forty-three full-time and thirty-six part-time employees. The fee was prorated as per county ordinances, whereas on October the 22nd, 2013, the 2014 occupational tax renewal was mailed, whereas on October 8th, 2014, the 2014 renewal was sent with a payment of three thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents, which included a late penalty in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight dollars and five cents based on a reported eleven million, one hundred twenty-two thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eighteen cents in gross receipts, whereas A&amp;S Commissary is requesting a refund of overpaid business tax from reporting period 2014 for a minimum of three thousand, three dollars and fifty-seven cents, stating they reported their gross receipts and number of employees in error. They reported the totals countrywide, count company-wide for the A&amp;S Commissary as opposed to the specific single unit in Henry County. See attached May the 21st, 2015 correspondence from Trinity Services Group Incorporated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Henry County either approve or deny this refund for three thousand, three dollars, fifty-seven cents to Trinity Services Group for the overpayment of business tax.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, do we have a person representing this firm that can speak at this time? Yes, ma'am. If you would approach the podium and state your name, please.
Demetrius Parker with Trinity Services Group. I know in the letter that our tax accountant had just started with the company in March of 2015, and whenever he did the assessment for the business license, let me back up. I had started with Trinity back in October of 2014, so I was new to the company too, and I think that you had contacted us, letting us know that the license was not renewed or something like that, but I think I was the one that you had spoken to me with. And I had to, of course, push that to our tax board up at our corporate office, and apparently he had pulled, like he had stated in his letter, the whole company-wide revenue instead of just the Henry County unit, and whenever our, and internally, these tax return, business licenses were done by the office manager at the commissaries before I had even started, and she was pulling revenue from the whole countrywide of every facility that they owned and put the employees, the revenue, and everything, so she did the tax assessment off of that. Whenever our tax accountant at the corporate office had went and looked these over, he noticed that they were not done correctly, and that is the reason for why they are asking for the refund of the back tax from 2013, 14.
Anybody have any questions or comment? We've got the background and the history. It goes back June 27th, 2012. How did, how did we get to the point where somebody would be requesting a refund? I mean, is this based on anticipated gross?
Right.
Okay. Who would provide that number? Would that not be the company?
Right, yes, sir. On the original application, you're asked to report the gross receipts for this business, and the gross receipts reported were fourteen plus, fourteen-plus million. So what, what actually started the process was code enforcement was called out to this business at 165 Andrew Drive because there was, there was not a, there was apparently a report that they were operating without a business license. So they were first reported in June of twenty, June the 25th of 2013. They were cited by code enforcement for not having a business license. So then the representative from the company, Christopher Albertus, came in on June the 27th, 2013, filled out an application for the business license, and that's where he reported that they had the fourteen million in gross receipts at forty-three full-time and thirty-six part-time employees. And it says the largest shift of employees are fifty-five, but that, that's part of the application processes that you're asked to report how, what the largest shift would be. And then, when, once the license was issued, they were prorated because a license that's issued mid-year is prorated on commercial businesses only, so it was, that's why the thirteen license was much less than the fourteen, even though the fourteen was reporting eleven million rather than the fourteen million for 2013, it's prorated for 2013. And then the fourteen was, was late. The renewals go out in the fall, and the licenses are due, they expire every year on December 31st, but the payment wasn't received until the following October for that, for that year.
So where, where did the error occur?
Well, yes. Chairman, I think I can, I can help clear it up. I think what happened is in 2014, A&amp;S Commissary reported eleven million dollars of revenue. The, the occupational tax, if you're, if you make eleven million dollars in revenue, is roughly thirty-one hundred dollars. So they reported eleven million in revenue, they paid thirty-one hundred dollars. They're now saying that that eleven million is, was, they reported it incorrectly. Their real revenue is in the neighborhood of thirty-eight thousand dollars, and the proper amount of occupational tax on thirty-eight thousand dollars is eighty-five dollars.
Eighty-five, if it's paid before the penalty applies.
So they're asking for a refund of the difference between the thirty-one hundred dollars and the eighty-five dollars. It, it would be similar to if you just over-reported your income on your tax return. If you, you put an extra zero on your income on the tax return, paid the taxes, you would want to get a refund of that money. And there's a specific Georgia law that says if you overpay your taxes due to error, you can request reimbursement from the Board of Commissioners, and that's, that's why we're here.
District Two?
The only question I have is, I know when I fill out these forms that you have to essentially sign at the bottom of the form an attestation that this is your accurate and fair, so was a new form submitted that was corrected with a new signature?
The renewal, the original, the original application was where they put the fourteen million. The renewal for 2014, they, you do sign that stating, and it's in your exhibits there for the 2014, that was signed by a representative of the company saying that for the eleven million, that was their true and accurate statement as far, to the best of their knowledge. That's what's on the renewal form for 2014.
So another question, I mean, I want, I want the county to be a business-friendly community, and I think it's exactly what the county attorney shared. I mean, if you, if you make a mistake, and Lord knows with taxes, we all can make mistakes, especially filling out very, you know, forms, that I want this, our county to be known as a business-friendly community, and, you know, we should, I think we should support businesses, and if a mistake was made and it's not our money, then we should refund that money. So I'd make that motion.
So, counsel, you're saying that, that was an estimated amount that they paid their occupational tax on?
It's not an estimated amount. It's based, you pay it based on your previous year's revenue. So what they're, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if, what, I don't know what the truth of this is, but they reported, what they're saying is that eleven million dollars is how much A&amp;S Commissary makes all over the country, and that here in Henry County, they only made thirty-eight thousand dollars. They reported the nationwide revenue and paid tax on the nationwide revenue rather than just the Henry County revenue. So if you believe that to be the truth, then the appropriate thing to do would be to refund the tax money. If you doubt that, or you don't see enough evidence to convince you that that's the truth, then the proper thing to do would be to not, to not.
So you're only saying they need to be taxed on things that generated commodities in Henry County? What, is, is that the corporate company? I mean, is that something that, that you go nationwide, that you don't count?
No, I think, and I, Pam, you'll have to tell us, but I believe you report your revenues earned at your location locally. If I own a business with fifteen locations out of state, I don't report my other locations for my occupation tax. I only report my local revenue.
If you did two thousand in Henry County and done fourteen million in Texas, you only listed two thousand.
Exactly.
Now, who gets, who gets the benefit of the fourteen? Texas?
Whoever, if, if there's an occupational tax in Texas, then they would, they would pay it there. And I think that's how it works for any business, paying where there's multiple locations.
The only thing you report nationwide would be your number of employees nationwide for the purposes of having an E-Verify number. You may have ten employees here in Henry County, but if you have two thousand nationwide, you would have to have an E-Verify number. That's the only part of the application process where you have to report what you have nationwide. But gross receipts are supposed to be reported for this location, and that's what was on their renewal, signed by, I'm sorry, I can't read the signature.
Do we have an affidavit indicating that that did in fact? I mean, is that something that, that somebody verifies that it was only that? How do we do that, counsel?
Well, I'm looking, I don't know that I see a, anything stay under oath that corrects it to, well, no, I do. There's a Exhibit H in your book.
Exhibit H is the renewal for 2015.
Is renewal for 2015 showing virtually no gross receipts.
Right.
I don't see one under, I don't see a certification for 2014 that shows anything other than eleven million.
The original application had fourteen million.
Fourteen million, right. I see Exhibit G, which is the second notice for the renewal for 2014.
Correct.
That was certified by, by an owner's representative that indicates total gross receipts of eleven million.
Correct.
I then see a letter addressed to the Board of Commissioners, which is Exhibit I, which indicates thirty-eight thousand dollars in gross receipts in Henry County. It isn't, it isn't signed with the same certification language that the renewal applications are signed with.
So you're saying that thirty-eight thousand, four ninety-three figure in this letter to the board would constitute that, that's what it?
That's what they're telling you the, the appropriate amount is, and none, we can't tell you, we don't know how much it is. The, the tax commissioner doesn't audit anybody's books.
That's correct.
We rely completely on the taxpayer.
We can request documentation for an audit, but we can't, we don't ask for.
Did we request that in this case?
We could, the only thing they provided us with was with Exhibit I, the profit and loss statement, but that didn't show enough evidence to us that the prior years were less than what they reported and certified that they were reporting. That's why we felt we couldn't make that determination. They.
The Tax Commissioner's Office.
Well, we recommend, based on what they returned on their, on their renewals, that they, that the fees stand.
District Two, do you want to be heard?
Well, I put a motion out there, but I can pull it back while we have the discussion because I, I want to make sure we perfect the record, so just not do... So y'all's recommendation is, you're saying that you don't think this is a legitimate attestation?
We don't have enough supporting documentation to say what they reported originally was incorrect.
If, if we could get supporting documentation and, and some type of, you know, I don't know, a signature guarantee, notary, you know, something attesting to that this is, you know?
Right.
Their, their thing. Y'all would be inclined to change that?
We would be inclined to recommend that, that they may possibly deserve the refund if we had documentation, say, from the, from the company nationwide.
Why don't we make the recommendation? I mean, I, I don't mind making a motion that we do a refund contingent upon, you know, I don't want to do a full audit. Other words, audit has a bad connotation. I come from a public accounting background, and nobody wants to hear the government's coming and auditing your, your institution because we are very business-friendly. But I do think it's warranted based upon what you're saying. Just show us, you know, no different than when you do, as, as the county attorney mentioned, I filed a lot of clarification letters with the IRS in, in my career. And you always, when you call and file an amended tax return, you have to submit documentation on why you've amended your tax return. So I see no reason that we can't pass, you know, pass and make a motion to refund the money contingent upon supporting documentation so we can treat it like an amended property tax form.
Okay. And if, if I could just say that the, the Tax Commissioner's Office is not qualified as well to, to ascertain if what they provide is sufficient enough proof for an audit. I, I mean, we wouldn't...
The law actually require, doesn't give the Tax Commissioner authority to, to pass judgment on these. You're required to. My suggestion would be, close the hearing, subject to additional information. Let's put it on the agenda just to conclude it upon your review of additional information. And we can, whatever additional information is brought back between now and whenever you want to put it back on the agenda, y'all get a review and vote at that time.
Okay.
But a refund of this type actually requires y'all to make the evaluation.
District Four?
I have a question.
Sure.
This is a little new to me. The thirty-eight thousand dollars, is that profit or is that just gross receipts?
It's supposed to be gross receipts. I have no idea if it's actual profit or gross receipts. That's what I'm saying, we don't have any...
I question that because I see here number of employees, forty-six. And if we have gross receipts of thirty-eight thousand dollars with forty-six employees, something ain't right.
We were, we were told by a representative from the company that this, this facility services three prisons. I think there was a conversation between the County Finance Director, Fred Oletta, and someone at the company that stated they, that the prisoners come and load this food theirselves. So I don't know if that's actually the case. I just know this is a large facility. I'm not sure how that's done.
Who, who are the employees? The, the forty-six employees, are, are you saying the prisoners' employees or...?
No, 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 no. No.
So there's forty-six people that work here for thirty-eight thousand dollars a year?
Mr. Prince, if you look at Exhibit J in your book, there is an email from an individual named Jeff Wax...
Yes, got it.
To Mr. Oletta. It indicates that the forty-four to forty-six employees are company-wide, and there are no employees at the Henry County location, which I'm not, I find that probably equally as difficult to believe as, there's forty-six. Certainly, there's somebody there. I, I don't, I don't know who's there. I don't have any idea, but certainly that this big warehouse full of food isn't sitting there unattended.
I'm, I'm gonna have to see more documentation.
Well, I'm gonna yield to Florida District Two, and I think he's in a position to make a motion in concert with the opinion just given by legal counsel. And I would terminate the, I would conclude that the hearing has taken place, and I yield to Florida District Two.
Yeah, all we, all we're looking for is, we, essentially, we need additional information. So if you could, we'd like to, we're really essentially tabling this until we get further information because we'd like to have supporting documentation.
Absolutely.
And attestation of what, what the new number is, so it actually has some meat to it because it sounds like the Tax Commissioner's Office, you know, we're the, the final body that has to decide it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion that we table this pending further information and use the guidance that the county attorney provided because we do need some type of supporting documentation.
Okay.
Have a motion District Two to hear a second. Second District, one, any further discussion? Don't fail to raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Thank you. Technology Services Resolution Warning, ONSSI Video Managed Service Contract to Comtech. Mr. Floyd, welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, board members, again, thank you for having me up here. The item before you is to award a managed service contract to Comtech Incorporated. Henry County has now implemented a standard DVR, a digital security solution for the entire county, including the courts, the sheriff, animal control, admin building here, and any other building we provide the security cameras for. This managed service contract would, is from Comtech, would be a sole-source provider, and this would include him, the company updating the ROMs, focusing, cleaning the lenses, doing the server upgrades, and managing all the cloud-based switches for these particular cameras. The contract would provide services above, including the replacement of defective hardware for up to five years. The base contract is two thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars a month, or thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars a year. The contract price could increase on a yearly basis based on the number of cameras installed. We have budgeted out and the, and the funds are currently available in the technology services budget as approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Anybody got a question, comments? Have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners, to award the ONSSI Video Managed Service Contract to Comtech. Nobody move in that direction? Have a motion District Three? Second District, one, any further discussion? Don't fail to raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you, sir.
The next item that is shown on your agenda has been post-phone, as previously read. Next, we'll have a public hearing. Alpha Papa 15-01 Sunrise Building Incorporated, McDonough, Georgia, appealed the zoning advisory board denial of a request for a multiple variances VR 15-03 to reduce the side yard setbacks for multiple lots located within the Providence Harbor residential subdivision and landlot number four of the seventh district, District Four. Dante, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is appealing the denial of multiple variances by the zoning advisory board. The applicant is requesting to reduce the side yard setbacks from fifteen feet to ten feet for several lots within Providence Harbor subdivision. And the applicant is also requesting to reduce, on the opposite side, the setbacks in the same regard. So he's looking to reduce from fifteen feet to ten, but increasing the other side from fifteen to twenty. Only the overhead is a rendering of what they're proposing. And the approximate number of lots that the applicant requested, the zoning advisory board, requested the variance from the zoning advisory board is around fifty-six lots. But again, I reiterate that the zoning advisory board denied it, and the applicant is appealing that, that denial tonight. At this time, I yield the floor to the applicant.
Anybody have any comments at this point to Dante? If not, will advocate, please come forward and state your name and the issue, please.
Good evening. My name is Carol Maker. I'm, I work with Sunrise Builders. We are requesting, or we were requesting, a reduction in side setbacks for the property to accommodate turnarounds for some of the driveways because they're side-entry garages. And the building pad and the lots were a little bit tight for the size homes that are being built in this community. We first requested reduction on, on all the side setbacks. The county said no, they really weren't okay with that. So we proposed this layout where you had a twenty-foot. We increased on one side and decreased on the other and kept in between each, each dwelling the same amount of space as the original zoning. We are also requesting that we have three corner lots with building pads, and I don't think we have a, I'm gonna put up a typical lot. That the building pads, there are three lots in the subdivision. The building pads are a little bit smaller than the rest of your interior lots, and we were looking to reduce, reduce the interior side setback to, I believe it was ten foot, from fifteen foot, just to give us more space to accommodate the houses that are already being built there.
I don't, I don't have any questions or comments.
I'm sorry?
What, what was your question?
I didn't have a question. I was just, that, that's what we're requesting, is that...
Okay. Okay, thank you. You look like...
No, I was waiting for everybody else. Everybody's looking up there.
Okay. Thank you so much. This constitutes a public hearing. I would like to open the floor up for fifteen minutes for somebody, people that like to be in favor of this. If you want to come up to the microphone, state your name. And I would allow the full group fifteen minutes. So who wants to be first? This is people that's in, in favor of it. Yes, sir?
My name is Walt Farmer. I own about five acres that adjoins the rear of the property. My main concern originally to the original variance was the buffer zone between the rear of their property, which is John's Mine. And there was some confusion there. And then they had not complied with all the original zoning requirements, the original zoning, which they since have, and I have no opposition to this at all. It's, uh, well, I understand it's a matter of moving it left, right, instead of toward the rear. It would not impact the buffer at the rear. Would it eventually wind up with a little bit more room for them people in their driveways to turn around? So I'm, I'm in support of it.
Anyone else in support of this? Anyone else that could appear in favor of this? Okay, if not, I will now open the floor up for fifteen minutes for anyone that'd like to come up and oppose this request. If you would, come to the podium, state your name. Okay, I'm going to determine that the public hearing has, issue has been completed. And now the board has a resolution in the book that will either approve or deny this request. And basically, what it would, it would either overturn the zoning board's denial or uphold the denial for a variance. So that's District Four, so I'm gonna yield the floor to District Four.
Dante, I've struggled with this one, to say the least. On one hand, you know, it doesn't meet criteria to get a variance. On the other hand, it benefits the people who are going to be moving into these homes. And to explain to the public exactly what's going on, when you have a very narrow lot and you do a side-entry garage, there's not enough room to actually back out of your house without going onto your neighbor's property. I have really struggled with this because, you know, we, we're here as commissioners to help the constituents. And this is something that I don't feel is something that's helping the builder. I, I feel it's something that's actually helping the, the homeowner who's moving into it. The issue I have with this, if I do this, then every subdivision with this zoning is going to come in here and request the same type move. And I'm afraid that it's going to start moving the county in a direction that we don't really want to go. We're, week after week, we're in here doing variances on setback lines. And I believe we did something similar to this in Eagles Landing where we had a minimal distance between the home, and the homes could move on the lot, but you still had to maintain a minimal distance. Now, this is different than what was proposed to the ZAB, correct?
This is what was proposed to the ZAB, in that in the initial meeting between staff and the vice president of Sunrise Builders, or the representative at that time, initially they did state that they wanted to, wanted the variance to, to accommodate a larger product. But then they changed their position in saying that they wanted to ask for the variances to accommodate the increased size of the driveway for the side entry.
And like I say, I, I've struggled with this one. I designed many lots in subdivisions, and I have seen this happen numerous times. You know, my long-term fix for this is we don't allow these tiny little lots. And I think, you know, some of the board can echo this, that perhaps it's not a function of moving the side setbacks, that it would be more of a function of not doing such a small lot. Because a little bit wider lot had, if the lot was even one hundred and twenty-five feet, this wouldn't be such an issue. But where I'm at on this, the corner lots on Warwick, Radcliffe, Radcliffe, Warwick, and Radcliffe, and Dunston, I, I do see where this is just so narrow that you really could not build a home that would probably go with the model that's being built in the subdivision. I would be okay with the, what are they requesting on these five, on the corner lots?
Yes, sir. They are requesting a five-foot reduction, so from fifteen to ten.
I would be okay with the variance on the corners. But I, I just can't, I can't adjust the side setbacks. I, I did meet with the builder and we discussed it in length, and I do understand completely. But I, I just can't open that door, just to Sunrise Builder. Dante can do a administrative variance on the sides. And I've given Dante the okay to, to let those move. I would like to request that we do keep the houses a minimum of thirty feet apart if we do move them. But you, you are clear that, you know, I'm okay with administrative...
Administrative, yeah, I can reduce the setbacks by ten percent.
Ten percent. So, I mean, that's not much, but it'll get you a little closer to where you need to be. So, but like I say, I, I've struggled with this one. I really would like to help, but I, I just can't start that ball going. And maybe we need to look at our ordina in the future if we're gonna do small lots like this, to change it to say minimum distance between home and maybe not side setback. Because I think that may solve the problem. And then, you know, we've talked again before about not having such small lots, you know, just across the board.
Just so I'm clear, if the, if you're saying that, yes, we can do the administrative on some of the lots to accommodate some of the larger homes to give us the room, but you're saying not to go below the minimum thirty foot between the lots. But if I do a reduction, I'm gonna be at twenty-seven, what, twenty-six and a half feet? Administrative...
On your side.
Twenty-seven?
The side setbacks on this subdivision are fifteen feet, so you'll be reduced by a foot and a half on, on both sides.
Okay, so that would, they'll put me less than the thirty feet, so...
If you move both the houses in the same direction.
Okay. All right.
That, that would be how you would have to do that. And, and one side wouldn't help you. It would just be the one, the one point five, which isn't gonna give you much room. And like I say, I really struggle with this. I, I...
I know, but we're not even, and I know we've had this discussion, but we're keeping the thirty foot in between the houses with this proposal here.
I see what you're doing, and I, I can appreciate it. But again, you know, like I told you, we met, if I do this here, I have to do it for every subdivision in the county.
If we can get a little bit of help on the corner lots to keep our product in line with what we're building, that would be wonderful. with what we're building, that would be wonderful.
Well, I'm agreeable to that because you just don't have enough footprint on the corner lots to make it happen. So, I'm going to recommend that we approve five-foot on the corners.
And that's lot number 1, 22, and lot 31? Is that correct?
I don't...
Okay. So, approve the five-foot reduction on the corner lots, the three-corner lots?
Yes, sir. And then, you are clear to do, I'm fine with your administrative variance, what you need to do on the remaining lots. But a denial of the changing in the variance and setbacks. And that's my motion.
We'll amend the resolution to reflect that.
Could you, for my benefit, could you put up a replica of what we just did? Because all I'm looking at is the resolution that goes up or down for the whole thing, and I'm, I'd just like to know where we are on the corner lots. I didn't quite understand that part.
What we'll do is, based on Commissioner Prince's motion, the resolution that you have in front of you will be amended to reflect where it says overturns, but it'll specify the three-corner lots and the reduction of that variance. But then, it'll also state that the remaining lots, the denial is upheld for the remaining lots.
Okay. So, what we're doing, we're not absolutely truly overturning the zoning advisory board's denial. We modified it.
For those three, those three-corner lots, overturning those.
Is that the motion? We have a motion from District Four. Have a second. Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Finance, resolution approving deposit accounts, money market funds, and our certificates of deposit agreements with the East West Bank as it pertains to excess general fund splash three and splash four cash bond proceeds funds. Mr. Oletta, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Bring tonight requests to basically help the county make a little bit more money on idle funds that we have in the various funds, the four funds that were mentioned. From time to time during the year, especially at tax collection time in November, December, we have huge cash balances that are sitting there. SunTrust Bank, we earn about five basis points. We can go to Georgia Fund One, and we earn, at the present time, 16 basis points, but there's about almost four basis points of administrative costs. We net about 11. This proposal here to go with, the opportunity to go with East West Bank will allow us to earn instead of the net 13.57 that we're getting at Georgia Fund One, to instead be 32 basis points, or almost triple. So, and then, the opportunity as well on funds that we have that are in excess of, that can be, that will be held in excess of a year, 12 months, to go ahead and place them in a 12-month CD because those can earn, at this point, 50 basis points, or obviously 18 more basis points over the 32 on a money market fund. So, what you have in front of you, it shows that the annual increase on these four funds on these amounts would be about $195,000 increase to place money in different accounts than where they're at today. This has been vetted by our bond counsel, which is on the second page of your executive summary, checking the codes. Also, our county attorney was involved in this as well with myself, working with Mr. Monticello to make sure we had the codes covered to be able to do this.
I'll have a question. In general funding, as of 5/31/15, it said the balance in the money market is $46,409,678. How much is that, is restricted or unrestricted?
None of it's restricted.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution approving deposit accounts, money market funds, and our certificate deposit agreements with East West Bank as it pertains to excess general funding splash three and splash four cash bond proceed funds. Does somebody move in that direction? So move. Have a motion, District One? Second District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, so move. Thank you so much. Somebody move, we approve the minutes for the May 27, 2015 meeting.
So move.
Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Chairman and Commissioner comments? Chairman has no comments. Any Commissioner like to be recognized or recognize? I will bring the floor to District One.
Chairman, I'd like to read a testimonial letter that was sent to Chief Lacy on June the 24th, 2015. It said, "Dear Chief Lacy, on June the 17th, my sister and I were taking a friend that is in Stage Four COPD to see her new grandson in Florida, great-grandson in Florida, excuse me. We traveled from Ohio and stopped at the Holiday Inn Express in McDonough for the night. While sitting up our, while sitting up her concentrator, we noticed we were missing the connector parts for the tubing. At this time, we started panicking. It was late and not knowing the area, we knew not what to do, so we called 911, explained the situation. The dispatcher got the ball rolling. We soon got a call from a fire department and advised that they would try to help us. A short time later, our guardian angel captain appeared to our door. He had exactly what we needed. He told us that the parts were not available at the fire station, so we checked with several area drugstores and finally located the needed part at a local nursing home. We felt the captain went well beyond his required duty to help us. By doing so, with his help, thus allowed us to continue our travel trail. We would very much like to thank the captain and recognize him for his mannerism and outstanding service. You should be proud to have such a caring captain on your department. Thank you for all your service. Gratefully, Gene Chapman, Barbara Smith, and Deborah Stokely."
And I'd like to thank them too. Thank you so much. Any other Commissioner like to make a comment this time? Yes, sir, District Four.
This is to my constituents in Kellytown. This is just a public service announcement. I've gotten a lot of complaints about speeders in Kellytown area, so, and I've noticed it as well. So, you can expect to see an increased police presence in Kellytown. So, if you're speeding in Kellytown, I might slow it down for a little bit, and this does not just mean the main roads. I've gotten some complaints on Rowan Road, on Knight Drive, which is actually a dirt road. So, we're going to be out, and if your kids are speeding, you might tell them to slow down, and we'd appreciate it, and let's keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? If not, County Manager, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir. Just want to, again, provide accolades to our staff. As you all are aware, last week, we had a prisoner to escape that was part of our Spalding County detail. I was out of town on vacation, but wanted to commend staff for doing an excellent job in providing assistance to Spalding County and their resources. Our Police Department, our Sheriff Department, our EMA Department, and our Budget Director, and our Risk Management Officer participated, provided all of the needed resources for those individuals, and we were successful in capturing the individual. But again, just wanted to thank staff for their diligence and their hard work, and for just making sure things were taken care of in my absence. So, thank you, staff.
Anybody have any comments? County Attorney?
I have no comments.
They'll come in meetings Wednesday, July the 22nd. Second meeting, correction, we'll have two meetings. The first meeting will be 9:00 AM, the second meeting will be 6:00 PM. Our public hearings reference the millage rate. Tuesday, July the 28th, at 6:30 PM, is a call meeting, discuss a special tax district for Category One and Two dam rehabilitation and maintenance, Comfort Room B. Wednesday, July the 29th, at 9:00 AM, is a public hearing and adoption of a millage rate. August the 4th, 9:00 AM, is a regular board meet. August 18th, at 6:30 PM, is a regular board meeting. Somebody move, we adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.